Okay, well, go ahead and call this meeting in order. Welcome. This meeting is being held in council chambers which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Thank you for that. This evening, we are going to have the invocation by Ron Fortenberry, who is the Uba City Police Department Chaplain. We will remain standing for the posting of the colors by the joint Uba City PD and Uba City Fire Department Color Guard. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, thank you for allowing us the privilege to be in a country that is free, where we can have free elections and be governed by leaders of our choice. I ask that your presence tonight would be evident by the decisions that are made. I ask, Father, that you would continue to bless our council members with wisdom and knowledge. Bless our city, heal the divide in our country, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, art.
Public communications. Appearance of interested citizens, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent counter or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed in the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited to larger groups, and larger groups are encouraged to select representatives to express opinions of the group. Do we have... Excuse me. No. Consent calendar. All matters under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent counter for individual action. We do have a speaker card on consent counter item number five from Lawrence Mertz.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Before we do that, did you want to open up the public comment for general public comment?
Yes, I would. Do we have any public comment on item number one? Public communications? Seeing none. At this point, we'll have Lawrence Mertz approach the mic.
Allow me to speak here. Uba City is contemplating authorizing the purchase of an off-road fire truck for $535,000. I don't question the fire need or the need for the truck, and I think it's a rather pretty truck, but I really wonder why you don't have a picture on your screen showing the taxpayers where their $535,000 is going to. A second question I have is, in 2018, Sedona Fire District approved the purchase of a Model 34 off-road BME truck for the amount of $313,000, and welcomed other counties to climb onto their contract pricing. What is the $220,000 difference in price that is almost 41% more for the same CAL FIRE approved truck? That's my question. It's money, taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from the public on consent counter items two through Seeing none. I'll bring that back to council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just make a brief comment before I move a motion for all of these. The simple answer to the question that was posed is inflation because we are using the same purchase mechanism and everything as before. Everything has gone up, so that's just what they cost today. They've gone up that much. So with that, I move that we approve consent items two through five.
I have a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Pesquale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Moving to presentations, number six, presentations to outgoing Mayor Kirchner. Boy, that sounds ominous. So I believe we go up front? Is that correct?
Yep. Okay.
You guys come down if you want. It's all good. It's all good. Well, wait. Mike is always, never ceases to impress with the way he dresses. I don't know what he does, but very dapper. All right, so Wade, the year goes by quite fast, doesn't it?
It does.
It's amazing. But I'm not going to ask you if you're happy it went past, but we'll be okay. Yeah, you did. You did a great job. So we have a proclamation here, we typically do, and I'm going to have to stop about midway to term pages, so excuse me when I do that, I got to swap out the mic, but I will read the contents of that for y'all. Whereas after being elected to city council in 2020 and serving honorably as a council member for three years, Wade Kirchner further dedicated himself to the community by serving as mayor of the city of Uba City from 2022 to 2023. Given his contributions to the city during this time and his continued commitment to public service, it is right and appropriate that his personal contributions be recognized, including serving on the Gilizer Drainage District, Intergovernmental Relations Committee, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agencies, Sutter-Uba Mosquito Vector District, Uba-Sutter Transit Authority, and the Budget Oversight Ad-Hoc Committee. And whereas the city council, the city of Uba City priorities include enhancing the quality of life for residents through public safety, fiscal responsibility, infrastructure, and to be business-friendly. Accomplishments in 2022, 2023 include, but are not limited to, partnership with CGI creating welcoming and informative videos of Uba City promoting the opportunity for business growth, attending the push-in ceremony for the new ladder truck and new fire engine, endorsement of the special event permit application, staffing of a four-person ladder truck, support of the gallery cancer screening for fire employees, approval of bargaining unit MOUs, adoption of the Adobe Sign Program, published the online budget to the website Updated the Wi-Fi at Station 4 supportive of continual hiring in the police department and financial support for activities related to community outreach, hosting several community workshops on the topics of housing for homeless, senior and low-income individuals, and ongoing commitment to maintaining a system of transparency, public engagement, and collaboration. And whereas during his time as mayor, the city established the city of Uba City as a Purple Heart city and became part of the Purple Heart Trail, held the first-ever Girls' Fire Academy, attended Fire Ops 101, the replacement of the Gauche Aquatic Park new spray ground and life flooring, the opening of the DRS Baines Park, $100,000 SECOG grant for new community science, $250,000 Bureau Reclamation Grant to improve the wastewater treatment facility, $3.4 million in the Department of Water Resources grant funding for turf replacement program, $150,000 CAL recycle grant to address impact of homelessness, acquisition of the SWAT Bearcat vehicle, the completion of the Bridge Street widening project, and whereas projects and developments occurred in 2022, 2023, implemented multi-factor authentication to all employees, updated interview rooms at the PD to Axon Technology, approved the Housing Element GPA-RZ project, approved the 219-unit Merriman Village project, implemented process to address burned and damaged buildings, $60,000 Solar App Plus Grant, replaced security cameras at Harder and Sanborn Water Storage Tanks, replaced point-to-point wireless network links to the Gauche Aquatic Park and the Sutter Animal Services Authority Building, Harder and Sanborn Water Storage Tanks, replaced UPS batteries for City Hall and the PD server rooms, replaced servers and storage for city virtual... You've been busy. Virtual infrastructure, release RFP, finance HR systems rolled out, the new VPN for remote access, standardized printer copy releases, and whereas Mayor Kirchner participated in many community events, to name just a few, and this is literally just a few here, the first-ever Holiday City Truck Parade, the Fourth of July Children's Parade, the Veterans Stand Down Say Love, the Mayor's Bus Tour, making a connection with a group of community members touring the upcoming developments within Uba City, the creation of the Halloween and Christmas Best Decorated Home, the annual Seek Parade in 2023 was the largest-attended parade with an estimated 250,000 people in attendance, the annual Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony on Plumas Street, Reeds Across America, the Baqai Parade, 93Q radio appearances, and held a special city council meeting at Uba City High School celebrating their 100th Whereas awards received during the 2022-23 term include the GFPA Distinguished Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, 24th Excellence in Budgeting Award at both the state and national levels, and redesignation as a Tree City USA Community. Now therefore be resolved that we, the city council of the city of Uba City, do hereby extend our appreciation and commend Wade Kirchner for his dedication and outstanding performance as the mayor of the city of Uba City. We hereby urge all residents to join us in recognizing Wade for his contributions and ongoing dedication to our community. Let's give him a hand. [applause] It's a traditional thing, it's a gavel to grace your wall in your home, sir.
I know, I'm sorry. Thank you. One, two, three.
Yeah, I have mine. Yeah, please. Anybody else?
Would you like to say a few words? I think you might.
You know, I'm going to leave that up.
We'll do it in a minute. I don't have the script in front of me, so we're supposed to sit down first?
What we're doing at this point is...
So at this point, Mr. David Morgan?
Oh, yes.
And Mr. Morgan is our rock star local representative for Congressman Lamalfa's office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm actually wearing multiple hats tonight. I have the distinct honor of working for Congressman Doug Lamalfa and presenting you certificates from our state representatives. I've got a joint certificate from Assemblyman James Gallagher and Senator Roger Nilo, and then I also have our congressional certificate from Doug, recognizing your leadership and your hard work over the last year. So on behalf of our local and state representatives, thank you. We appreciate your tenure and your leadership. Thank you.
He just wanted the two of them.
All right, we sit down now.
Wow, thank you for that, City Council, and thank you for passing my thanks to the congressmen and our state legislators. Last year went by pretty quick, but I will tell you that I had it pretty easy. It has always, it has been a privilege to be in a leadership role this past year in the city that I grew up in and have always called home. Looking back at the previous year, I had it pretty easy. I didn't have a global pandemic and the aftermath like my predecessors did. It was a year of ribbon cuttings, park, temple, and hotel openings. These and many other developments are the combined and concerted efforts of hard-working people behind the scenes. I've had the good fortune to work with an engaged and focused city council and four and amazing city staff. Police, fire, public works, parks, water, wastewater, all the individuals that keep this city running. I leave the position of mayor in capable hands. Vice Mayor Harris is a more than capable leader and does not back down from a challenge. Vice Mayor is someone who I've grown to respect in my short three years on council, and I can't think of a better leader to steer the city during this time. In the upcoming months, the citizens will have an important decision in the form of a potential revenue measure. The outcome of this decision will set the tone and the limits of what the city can and cannot do moving forward. In cooperation with our partners in Sutter County, the electorate needs to be informed on the decision before them next November. The importance, value, and urgency needs to be communicated. Speaking of our partners in Sutter County, I want to say for the record that the relationship between the city and the county is a strong one, one that I value. We may not always agree on everything, but then again, you're not supposed to. I do look forward to the coming year, a bright future and the opportunities it will I would like to thank the citizens of Uba City for entrusting me in the position of mayor. It wasn't taken lightly. Also, thank you to my fellow council for their unwavering support, and amazingly patient city manager, Diana Langley, and most importantly, my son, Jack, and my wife, Lisa. Thank you for putting up with the endless meetings, ribbon cuttings, and unscheduled little emergencies. Again, thank you, and God bless. Speaking of that, can I have my wife meet me down front, please? So, this is my wife, Lisa. Say hi to everybody. If you don't already know, Lisa's my biggest supporter, probably my biggest fan. I had an ill-fated attempt to run for city council back in 2016, and you know what? I didn't put the work in, and it showed. And when 2020 rolled around again, I thought, well, shoot, the only way this is going to work is with her support. And boy, oh, boy, did I get that every bit of way. So thank you for...
Told me to.
Yeah. All right, moving along. Business from the city council. Number eight, ceremonial nomination of mayor. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. At this point, I will open it up to council for nominations of mayor.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
It is with great honor, it is with our tradition, it is with our policy, and it is with the will of the people that I would like to nominate current vice mayor Sean Harris to be our next mayor of the city of Uba City.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I would like to add to that motion that Mr. Harris, soon-to-be Mayor Harris, this is his third mayorship, and that is, he's in rare company, and he absolutely deserves that rare company, and I would like to second Councilmember Shaw's nomination.
So I've got a first and a second, seconds from Councilmember Boom Garden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, before you do, Vice Mayor Harris, do you accept the nomination?
I'm sorry, he's already elected. It's done.
Well, since I'm already parked in the parking spot, I guess I better expect it.
Thank you very much.
All right.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Shaw, a second from Councilmember Boom Garden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries.
All right. I would like it noted that my ex-wife stood up and applauded for me. No, I'm glad Karen, you're here. That's awesome. Everybody's here, and this is a familiar chair. I tell you, like we're saying, it's kind of nice to be here. It's my last go-around, my last year, not only my four-year term, but my last year on council, because of districting, I can't run again because when my term is up, my neighbor over here will have two years left on his term, so, you know. So we approved districting, which seemed like a good idea at the time, but anyway, that's good. So thank you all very much. You know, I don't have a lot here. I don't do a lot of reading and stuff. I like bullet points, and it's just basically concepts, and I just want to say that it's an honor to be here. It's an honor to serve with these four gentlemen. It's an honor to work with the city staff that we have here. The staff works so hard. Everything that you see that goes on in our city does not happen without them, and I'm not talking about the big stuff, the revenue measure we referred to earlier, that was a big accomplishment we recently did that we're hopeful to get to fruition with these two gentlemen right back there. Excuse me, one second. But, you know, we have a lot of stuff going on. You see a lot of building now sprouting up in Uba City, all those new houses, all the retail coming up. It's just multifamily projects, single-family homes, and how about Bridge Street, right? You haven't dreamt down that yet? That's remarkable. It's wonderful. And there's hopefully a lot more to come of things like that that we are working to. Just because I'm sitting here now doesn't mean anything different. We're going to continue doing the business we were doing, it's just that now I have the gavel and I get to sign a few more pieces of paper, but this is a team effort, this council with an awesome, an awesome city staff. Our department heads are all, I believe they're all here today. I see Spencer from Finance over there and is here. Welcome in. Chief Jesse Alexander from our fire department, Brian Baker from the police department, Natalie, where are you? There's Natalie right there. I already mentioned Spencer, and Ben right in front of us. He's the guy that gets all your roads and all your side works done. I don't have a drink in front of me. We created a drinking game whenever we say Ben Moody, we have to drink, so. Alcohol not required, it's just a gesture of respect for the man. Long story. Anyway, so, yeah, you know, and then, you know, everyone, all these people, the city staff, the department heads I just mentioned, they fall under, and including us, my adopted mother, Diana Langley, over here in the corner. She has a way of...
Older than me.
I am older, that's why you're adopted. Thank you for reminding me. You have a little more hair than I do, too. But, you know, I tell you, with her leadership and what she does and the looks that she gives me when I'm kind of going off the rails, I appreciate it so much, and I think we all do. What'd she say? What'd she say?
She said you're about to get...
I'm not about... Well, she doesn't like to be talked about, especially publicly, so I'm kind of going to get it now, but I tell you, it might sound strange for people who don't know me, but not to the people who do, that I have a way of not being able to hide my body language, and it's kind of readable, and I've been counseled many times, sometimes. These guys are nodding their head. So, but Diana, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your support, thank you for your guidance, your insight, your perspective, and the way you do business, and I just, I can't appreciate you, I can't express it enough. It's awesome. And of course, you know, my fellow counterparts here, we're all different. We all come from a different place, we do things a little bit differently, but we come together, and this is, you know, there's people maybe disagree, but I tell you, we do come together for the betterment of the city, and we try not to just live in the moment, we try to think ahead, and not only internally, but externally, the relationships with all the governmental entities, not only in Sutter County but Uba County and statewide, and in some cases nationwide, we work together with the intent of making Uba City as good as it possibly can be, and I know that we have done so, and I know it's usually limited by this evil stuff right here, right? Just like everybody, but we do the best we can to prioritize and do things, and the discussions we have... But we do the best we can to prioritize and do things, and the discussions we have are frank. I think we have good relationships with one another to where we can be frank. And that's what, we don't want to tap downs around egos or personalities or anything. We get to the blood and guts of taking care of business. And I really, really appreciate you all for that, and thank you for that. Now, and then, I'm going to move on to balance it all out. Our little, our little man in the corner over here known as our city attorney. Shannon, as he's proven a couple of times already today, will not hesitate to keep us in check and make sure we stay on the right path. And we want the, an answer, he will give it to us, but one thing I appreciate you, among many other things, Shannon, is that you give us options. Risk management, this is, this is what you can do, this is, this is the most legal, safest thing to do. This is what you could do if your priorities might not be in a line, and here's the risk associated with it all the way down the line. And I tell you, that is gold. And so thank you very, very much for everything that you do for us. All right. Hold on. Oh, the good part. My family sitting right here. You guys, thank you for coming today. We do a lot of work in this, this is like our living room right here, I tell you, and it's, it's, it's a busy place. City Hall, this sitting right here, and so thank you very much for not only coming today, but your support, that you, your sacrifice involved, because sometimes I can't be there or I, or I have to be distracted, or I'm, I have to step away, I have a phone call, you name it. But never once has anybody ever complained about that, and thank you very much for that. And we have another year to go, it's going to be a very busy year. At least if we have our way, it's going to be very busy. We have a lot of work to do, to keep doing, but thank you very much for all that, for everything you do. And just real quick, I do know that, you know, this is a process here, in some countries, in some, not cities, but in some countries, this transition, we sat up, shook hands, smiled, swapped seats, done. Right? How awesome is that to be able to do that in a country that it's that easy, right? And so, and it's an honor to sit here and be the steward of this center chair for a year. It really is an honor to do that. And I appreciate the opportunity, do not take it lightly, and will always remember that. So thank you all very much, and thank you all very much. I'm going to step aside a little bit and say that if anyone's inclined, we're having a little bit of a reception in honor of this process and in honor of Yuba City and everything we've accomplished at City Cafe on Pluma Street immediately after I use this for the first time in a couple of years. So you're all invited if you're, if you're inclined to do that. So, once again, thank you very much. Thank you all very much. It's an honor to be here. I look forward to a lot of hard work, a lot of engagement, a lot of communication, a lot of effort to keep the ball rolling, to make our city awesome, like it always has been and always will be. Thank you all very much. Well, I thought there was one more thing, but there is not. The only thing we have left is we have to nominate a Vice Mayor. Do we have any public comments about that process or anything like that? Any at all? Anybody want to comment about that? No? All right. I'm so happy to hear the laughs, because you know what? We're going to get business done. There's nothing says we can't have fun doing it, right? All right. I will entertain nominations for the position of Vice Mayor.
Through the Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate for the position of Vice Mayor, Mr. Dave Shaw.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Pasquale. All those in favor, will you do a roll call or no? It doesn't matter. We don't have to do that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, here we go. Shannon, come back. Do you, do you, do you accept the nomination, Mr. Future Potential Vice Mayor? You already have your polo shirt in front of you.
I know, I guess, I, yeah, I will. The shirt tells me so, and I'm not looking at my wife right now.
And through the Mayor, it'd probably be clear for the record if we did a roll call vote this time around.
Are you sure?
It's just my suggestion.
All right, sure. Like I said, Shannon's the man, so may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Kirchner. Councilmember Pasquale.
Aye.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
You can't vote for yourself.
What are you, what are you reading from?
Vice Mayor Harris.
Am I Vice Mayor?
Well, now you're Mayor.
See, we got to have fun. Yes, yes, you have, you have five yeses. Thank you, ma'am. Poor Sierra. She did such a good job.
She has to work with us.
All right. So all those in favor, we have all said yes, we have five yeses. Congratulations, sir. All right. I don't have my, hold on. We do not change seats. We have the proper order. Deputy Clerk, she can move the nameplates later, no worries. Anybody have any comments? We'll start with Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to acknowledge the great work that former Mayor Wade Kirchner did during his, his time in the seat. He will now be forever recognized as Mayor, which I think is quite an honor for, for you and for us to be able to, to refer to you as such. It was a easier year than some, but you still accomplished a lot. And for your leadership, I am very grateful, and I appreciate all the, all the things that you had to do to pull us all together to get ahead. As far as other comments in regards to the Mayor, you know, I'm looking forward to having to endure a third year with Sean Harris as the Mayor. I'm saying that in jest. You know, Sean was the Mayor my first year on the council, and of course, when you look up to someone who is a proven leader, you have the ability to learn and gain expertise and protocol and all those things. So I know Sean's going to do, excuse me, Mayor Harris is going to do a wonderful job, and I look forward to working alongside him. For Vice Mayor Shaw, it's his second term in the seat, and I'm looking forward, again, along with Councilmember, former Mayor Kirchner and Councilmember Pasquale. We've got a lot in front of us this year, and I'm really looking forward to it. I would like to acknowledge that the Chairman of the Board of the Sutter County Supervisors is here, Carm Baines. Appreciate our relationship, it's been mentioned, that County Administrative Officer Steve Smith is also in the audience. And just again, as we talk about relationships, especially amongst the political bodies, we have Supervisor Gary Bradford from Yuba County here as well, amongst a bunch, a bunch of other folks that who support our City Council. And with that, I'm going to keep my comments really brief, because I know we want to get over to City Cafe and celebrate our new Mayor and celebrate the term of our former Mayor Wade Kirchner.
All right, speaking Mr. Kirchner, it's your turn, buddy.
Thank you. You know, this, last month has been interesting when I, people ask me what's happening, and usually I tell them, well, you know, my time as Mayor is coming to an end. And a lot of folks in this community get kind of confused about the role of Mayor through City Council, because they think of other cities like Marysville, where it's a four-year term. I explain to them, no, it's only for a year, and they go, well, who's, who's going to be the new Mayor? And I go, well, it's Sean Harris. And they go, again? But in a good way. But in a good, but in a good way, in a good way, in a good way. And so, as Councilmember Boomgarden already said, we've got all the faith in the world in you, my friend. You're going to do good things, continue to do good things. I would like to point out that we do have our District Attorney with us, and I know she doesn't like to get pointed out, but she's, she's shaking her head. But thank you for being here with, with, with us and putting up with this. And I just look forward to the next year and getting, continuing our work. I am going to miss our, our weekly meetings, City Manager, but I'll still get to see you once in a while and the week, the monthly radio services, but I'm sure the Mayor will do exceedingly well at that as well. So I'll keep my comments short and just say, once again, thank you very much.
All right, very good. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I'm the newbie on the council, and I've only had Wade as my Mayor. But the one thing, over the years, I've spent several years in capacity of being elected official, and there was two types of leaders. There's the mission-driven leader, and there's the people-driven leader. Wade encompasses both of those. He, he sees the focus of the mission, but he also remembers that there's people involved in making that mission happen. And I've gotten that same impression from the other three council members as well, that they encompass that in, in their mode of operating as well, and I appreciate that. And I look forward, I think Sean and I are probably the two most like in personalities on the board, and so I'm looking forward to this next year, and there is a lot of really important things that is going to make or break this whole community. And I've been here my whole life. I'm fifth generation here in this community, and it's important to me. So I think we've got the right people in place. So thank you, gentlemen.
And thank you, Councilmember Pasquale. New Vice Mayor, Dave Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you guys for entrusting me to be Vice Mayor once again. It's not a job that any of these positions, that any of us take lightly. It's very honoring to, to be a part of the council, and it's very honoring and humbling to become Vice Mayor and then Mayor. So I know we're in good hands. Third time's got to be the charm, you know? But you are, yeah, you're, you're a very elite, Mr. Mayor, in the fact that you're going to be a three-term Mayor. And watched you navigate us through a pandemic, watched you keep your cool with things, you know. Councilmember Boomgarden, you followed him as well and kept us on the right path, and I watched that cool demeanor all the way through, transitioned all the way through to Wade. I've seen you bring us back this year, the culmination the council worked on all those years, and lead us through that. And then Mike, brother, you come on this council, and you've been a breath of fresh air, and I like the fact that you talked earlier. Frank, tell us like it is, and I'm proud to have you up here with us. It's been, it's been, like I said, a breath of fresh air to have you up here. When I was thinking about what to say tonight, what's made this council really unique, I go back to the first year that Mark and I came on the, the council, and Sean, you were Mayor that year. And the first thing that came out of your mouth at that meeting, and it has resonated with this council every bit of the way, leave your ego at the door. And I'll say it again, leave the ego at the door. Because we're here to put the people first and not pettiness or egos. And you've already seen tonight, we make real light of, oh, he's Mayor, he's Mayor, he's Mayor. Who's Mayor? Who's on first? What's on second? You know, it's that old, that old joke. At the end of the day, what makes us unique and so strong is the fact that we come together and understand each other and respect each other enough. We may not always agree, but we get the flipping job done that we need to do. And when we get our job done, then we have the best city staff that I would put up against any, any other municipality in the world. Diana, the way that you guys operate, the way your staff operates, the teamwork that's been created over the last five years that I've been on this council is something special, and it's something that we have to maintain, because I see the respect between the council and our E-Team and our team members. I see it from you as a city manager to your team members and up, and it goes well beyond just respect, it's camaraderie, it's just listening, working together. I can't say it, Shannon, well, you know, but, no, Shannon, you've always been there for us, and, and, you know, you always do like the Mayor said. You give us those parameters, but we're the policymakers and we make those decisions. But at the end of the day, what I can say about the five people sitting here tonight at this dais, and it goes back to what you said five years ago, it's not about titles, it's not about egos, all that crap gets dropped at the door. It's about coming in here and getting the work done. And they left me nobody to thank for being here, because Jen, I was going to recognize you, because Dad forgot you, Mark couldn't see you from the plants. So Dave, David Morgan, thank you for being here on behalf of Doug Lamapa, you know? And the last but not least, I can't say enough for my, my family, my wife and my, my kids. They've loaned me to the city now for five years. We got three more to go, and we've got a lot of work to get done, and I know the five of us can. So thank you. You get Dad back and you get your husband back in three more years, so it's 36 months, you know? But thank you all again for everything, and I look forward to this next year.
All right, and thank you. There's a spot in here for me to say stuff. I pretty much already said everything, but I want to take the moment to, you know, acknowledge the, you know, this is a tough seat to fill, following Mr. Kirchner here. I agree with Mike in that he's definitely has, very versatile, he's nimble in his approaches things, it depends on what issue is coming up. He'll get all fired up and like, oh my God, what's burning down? And it turns out some of the appeal Democrat had an article about it, it was something. So he just, he's, he's a great guy, he stays on top of things, he knows a lot of people. I thought I knew a lot of people, but you try to go to Moose Lodge with him, you won't, you won't get a word in, because he's going to be saying hi to everybody. He's a, he's a good guy, he gets around, and Wade, that transcended here in your role as Mayor this last year, he did one heck of a job, and I know you could not have done that heck of a job if it wasn't for Lisa. And Lisa, for what it's worth, I know I'm not Wade, but thank you for your support, because that is absolutely critical. He cannot come up here, we all cannot come up here and do the meetings and things we do and focus on what's important without knowing that things at home are stable and secure and supportive. So that means so much. So thank you for that. And I'm going to conclude on that. Thank you, Lisa Kirchner. And thank you all very much. Good seeing you.